Called the Village Council's Special Meeting to order September 15, 2020 here at Forest Hill Church in Waxahachie, North Carolina. The show's at 6:35. First off, I'll need a motion to have Councilman Bob Markelise participate remotely.
Aye.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So unless we have changes, I'll need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented for tonight's special meeting.
Aye.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Village of Marvin's Town Hall Meeting. My name's Joe Colino, your mayor, serving at you now for my fourth consecutive year term since 2013. I'm very excited to finally be doing this type of town hall format, as I'm not aware if we've ever done this before. We appreciate all of you that are able to attend this meeting in person and are happy to be able to provide this venue in a virtual setting. So hello and welcome to all of you. Looks like we got a number of people in our town that are participating, so thank you for that. As you can see, we're doing our best to practice social distancing, and we hope that those who are attending in person will do the same. We have a great agenda for you tonight, which was made available to all here and on our website. Before kicking off the meeting, I'd like to start with a few introductions. Our town council consists of a mayor, four council members. Attending today are obviously myself as mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Kim Vanderburg, Councilman Jamie O'Leary. We have Councilman Bob Markelise attending virtually. And our newly appointed member, Andy Orpitt, welcome. In the seven years I can tell you that I've served as your mayor, I couldn't be more honored and proud of working with these individuals as council. All their work and thoughts and their own ideas, each and respectfully, and each other's decisions, we respect. So the decisions we make, basically, are all our own, and we're always respecting each other's decisions. Our staff present here today are, to my left, town administrator and moderator for tonight's meeting, Christina Amos. We have our town clerk, Austin Yao, newly appointed, welcome, Austin. Our town planner, Rohit Amananamachi. Did I say that right? Sorry. Finance officer, Jamie Bravuznak, also newly appointed, so welcome, Jamie. Our deputy finance officers here, Julie Rothrock, tax collector Nancy Schneber, park manager Derek Durst. I would like to take this time to say special thanks to all of staff members who helped with this together, especially Rohit, with all the things to make this possible and be able to do this remotely as well. So thank you very much, staff, for that. In attendance today may also be some or all of our board members who serve on the village boards. These include members from both our planning board and our parks, recreation, and greenway board. To avoid any meeting violations, my understanding is if they are attending tonight, there may be a potential form of those boards, however, they will not be acting in their official capacity at tonight's meeting. Welcome to you all. I'd like to take a quick moment now to thank Forest Hill Church here in Waxahachie for providing the Village of Marvin and our residents this beautiful venue to have this type of meeting. Because this is a community-related event, they've donated this space for our use. I'm not sure we could have pulled this off with all of the social distancing requirements and given what we have existing. So we can't thank you enough for your generosity. And I want to be clear about the reason for holding this meeting in this type of format. This is an opportunity to provide residents with an open forum to ask questions directly to members of village council. This is also an opportunity to address misinformation that has been going on in our village through various media platforms. We are not here to make decisions or to vote on any matters. We are here to listen and to comment if called upon. If any one council member is answering a question or has an opinion, it is with the understanding that it may or may not be how other council members feel about that subject. We're here to present information on ongoing projects, including village hall, village center district, also referred to as the Heritage District, our roads and roundabout updates, and much more. We will also use this setting to hold a public input meeting on our land and use plan that will be adopted in the near future. With some of the topics being discussed, it's imperative to know that in some cases, the village may not have direct decision-making abilities, and we will certainly let you know when that's the case, if we have authority on that or not. With that, I'd like to turn this meeting over to our village administrator and moderator, Christina Amos. Ms. Amos will be responsible for keeping us on schedule. Other than for our guest speaker, our author, Jean Stowe, and for our land use plan, public input meeting, we will be asking you to hold all of your questions until after all the presentations are completed. Thank you all again, and let's have an informative, respectful, productive meeting tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, Christina Amos.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, and thanks for those that are listening at home. We, as the mayor stated, we will have a question-and-answer opportunity towards the end of the presentations and the meeting. So those of you that are in attendance and those of you that are sitting at home, if you can just hold your questions until the end, I will do my best to keep us on track with our timeline. And I wanted to introduce Jean Stowe.
Good evening. I am the author of Inherit the Land: Jim Crow Meets Mrs. Maggie's Will, which is a history of Marvin and the area from actually before the Civil War, pretty much down to the present. It's a project that I've been working on for 27 years and counting, ever since I discovered it when I was a reporter for the Charlotte Observer in 1993. The book was published in 2006 by the University Press of Mississippi. Earlier this year, two documentary makers, Silk Kozar and Jim Johnson, captured the story in four minutes, and that's what we're going to show right now.
Not the silent movie version. I can make a quick suggestion for all attendees virtually. If you could put your mute button on.
We're having some issues with the Zoom, the minute cooperating, so he's going to put the room in the chat.
He just did.
People can access it by themselves at home, and if you can just, I guess, present what the video says.
Children aren't going to be able to get this. Can they put it up here or bring it up just from YouTube? Just for the room?
Yeah, just for the room, and then suggest that those that are...
Typically, typically, video does not sound good when it goes through like a video call like this.
That's what it's saying, and they just do the room.
They just do this room, and then...
I don't know if we can, I don't know if, I guess we can mute ourselves until people watch it on their own. That would probably be the best idea, I guess. Oh, there we go.
I grew up here not knowing there was anybody named Jim Crow. When my relatives died, white people put on their suits and came over to our house. I thought black and white people helped each other.
Before the turn of the 20th century, was this family that didn't look like any other family, because it was two single women and an African-American girl. And the whole community accepted it.
It's the best place you could live, possibly live, and I've lived there all my life, except when I was in service.
Those white women didn't just treat my grandmother like she was a servant. They treated her like she was family.
I know she loved them. She really did. That was her whole conversation, with Maggie and Sally, and with Maggie and Sally, that. They really were good, too.
They were viewed as kind of odd, but in a good way. They were very firm, strong women, really didn't seem to care too much what other people thought about them, and they were going to do what they felt was right.
They were always generous. I think because they didn't have any children, I thought they just needed somebody to care for them. My grandmother would tell me all the time, oh, she had no service, Maggie, I needed this. She needed a dress, she had it. I passed stocking, I passed shoes, next day she had it.
Our grandfather was... We had a farm, and we had like six, so ten of farmers, which were all black. And all my playmates and friends were black.
You weren't any kids?
No, everybody could cut.
We never had any Russian women?
No, at all, on the farm.
So we have family unions. We have them for the church, because so much of the family goes to that church. So when they extended an invitation, they came to this church.
I found out later that actually Maggie and Sally Ross lived in a big house next door to that church. That was ground zero for the story that made Marvin the kind of community that it is. And that was the heart of Marvin.
I learned that my mom's family inherited land from Sally and Maggie Ross. People won't believe it, that white women gave black people that much land.
People were coming in, who had nothing to do with this land being bequeathed, and trying to change the minds of people who knew the Ross sisters by relationship and by reputation.
The case was set for the Supreme in 1921. Judge J. B. Ray presiding. Jury selection took until nearly midnight, with over 100 people interviewed. You might say, why 100 people? Well, you had to be okay with black people inheriting white land.
Especially back then, people came forward and told the truth, and the truth transcended color.
J.G. Clark, manager of the belt store in Waxahachie, had seen that equality when Maggie and Mitty shot together. So when he testified, he said, "But for their difference in color, I would have thought they were equals."
Twelve white men on a jury in the Union County courthouse upheld that will, and the family inherited the land. You cannot review that on YouTube anytime you like, it's just Inherit the Land Trailer 2020. The opening line of the documentary, which it so happens is the closing line of the book, is the most important. "I grew up here not knowing there was anybody named Jim Crow." That was spoken by someone not related to the family that inherited the 800 acres, but who had the good fortune to live in a community, Marvin, that was transformed by that legacy. She grew up when the South was defined above all by Jim Crow, but not Marvin. The love of the black and white Rosses created a society that the rest of us still only dream of. It established mutual respect among neighbors who recognized that the Rosses were odd but good. It empowered African-Americans with a level of economic participation that made buying and selling land across the color line normal. By the mid-1940s, numerous black former tenants, led by a cousin of Tom Houston, were prospering on their own farms. James Robert Houston and his wife, Lucinda, whom I also met in 1993, bought 61 acres from a white man from Waxahachie with the farm security loan in 1939, and paid off the debt by 1946. As the Monroe Journal reported, "This family is an outstanding influence in the Ross Town community, having been responsible for a very successful organization of a community group of colored people. We have also secured many applicants for farm ownership by the influence of this family. The comparison between the social and commercial position of this family now and at the time of acceptance of the program is quite marked. The verdict by not one, but two all-white juries in Monroe, who upheld the will in the 1920s at the height of the Ku Klux Klan in the rest of the country, validated a rare sense of belonging in the community that endures to this day. I believe the Marvin they created is the society that is still struggling to break out around us everywhere else in our day, as we reckon honestly with our past, clear way to habits and symbols of division, and seek to form a more perfect union, establish justice, and fulfill our dedication to the proposition that all are created equal. Maggie and Sally, and Bob and Mitty, show us how." First, if you heard, Maggie and Sally did what they thought was right, no matter what others thought. These women grew up very poor. They were so poor that before the Civil War, they were pulling the plow in the fields. Their farm was not, they had farmland not far from here, and they attended Union Methodist Church. In fact, their grandfather is buried in the old Union cemetery, which is adjacent to the Lawson subdivision. You might be familiar with it. That's where they buried their family. That was part of the history here. They didn't get to go to school, but a man, Andrew Jackson Spark, at the old Union church, taught them to read and write and do arithmetic, and they wound up being very prosperous business people in the community. They somehow was instilled into them, they should treat people with equality, and maybe it was because they were poor. But even though they grew up poor because their father was a terrible provider, their grandfather, Jonathan Burleson, was one of the richest men in the community, and he was not happy with the way his daughter, Susan, was suffering with Nathan Ross. So when he wrote his will in 1852, it said that his daughter, Susan, could have the use of his land, his farm on what is now Crane Road, as much as she wanted, but her husband, Nathan, had no right of entry to the land. So when he died in 1859, Susan and their children moved on to the land, and not Nathan. He's buried at the old Union cemetery. The interesting thing is Susan isn't anymore, because the sisters had her body moved and their brothers' body moved through the Banks Presbyterian Church Cemetery across the street from the village home. They, in 1875, Susan, their mother, brought this African-American child, five years old, named Bob Ross, into the family under an apprenticeship law in North Carolina, and they raised him as their own. Her son, Dennis, taught him to do the farming. When Dennis died in 1896, Bob Ross was 26 years old, and he took over the operation of a 1,600-acre farm operation. He would supervise the black tenants and the white tenants, collect the rent, run the barn and livestock in consultation with them. And they had a business manager to handle the bookkeeping, who was Richard A. Hudson, the grandfather, as you saw, of Joe and Richard Hudson, who live Marvin-adjacent, you might say. They are on railroad just northeast of Crane Road. But that was what was going on in the village. The women in 1892 moved from Crane Road, from their grandfather's house, to a house in between Banks Presbyterian Church, the Marvin Methodist Church, right next to where the village hall is now. There was the grandest house in the community. You may have noticed it in the opening scene there, when all the people are standing in front of the house. That photograph is from 1897. The house still stands, unfortunately, it no longer stands in the same place. You should get it back to your village home. It was moved in 1964 to Mecklenburg County, and it was moved again in 2003, and it's just over the county line in Mecklenburg County on Marvin Road, overlooking Six Mile Creek. It has been lovingly restored, and it's beautiful, and you can't miss it. If you drive up Marvin Road, it's yellow. But they had moved it, so you have this family living in the heart of Marvin, that is two single women, never married, no children, and an African-American child that they were raising as their own. When Bob got married and had a daughter, he sent her to live with him. They sent her, I asked a woman named Lavinia Calh, she was once the organist at Banks Presbyterian Church. In 2001, I think, I met her, and she told me, my mother told me about those Ross women. People talked. I said, "Ms. Calh, I'm sure they talked. What did they say?" And Ms. Calh said, "Those women were odd, but they were good." And after all those years, I finally understood how they conducted this type of life in this type of community, and how they convinced two juries in the 1920s that this really was their family. They were odd, there was no other family like that around. But everybody knew that it was because they were good. They practiced equality with Bob and Mitty in the house and on the street. You saw in the video, when they went to Waxahachie's shop in what is now Waxahachie Women's Club, that was originally the Belt Building, the manager noticed that they acted like equals. He said, "Except for the difference in their color, I would have thought they were equals." That's kind of an arresting statement. And I think that's because they knew they were equals. He went on to say that Maggie would sometimes have to buy things, because Mitty would find something that was high-priced, and Maggie would say, "No, we can't afford that," and Mitty would pout until she got it. The manager said, "I knew that if I could get Mitty to liking something, I was going to get to sell it." Well, I have four daughters, and I think that's exactly what family looks like. Maggie and Mitty lived a family life right there on the grounds of their village home. In the middle of the trial, the Observer's correspondent then, I wasn't old enough to be that one, he wrote, "The evidence has been sensational at times, tending to show the horrible conditions in the Ross home, where the Negroes were admitted to absolute social equality. The propounders are seeking to show that this was the full consent of Maggie Ross, who had a natural affection for the Negroes, and for this reason allowed them the privileges they took and bequeathed the property to them. That social equality in the home included eating at the table with the African-Americans, which was not done up until my lifetime. Maggie shared shoes, clothing, even underwear with Mitty." But it wasn't just in the house. When Frank Crane, who was the storekeeper living in that beautiful Queen Anne House down Newtown Road from your home, when he came as the head of a bunch of road commissioners that had been assigned to build a road across the Ross farm, it was the Burleson, it was the Ross farm, right? He asked the women where they would like the road to be put. And they said, "Well, you need to go and ask Bob Ross that, because it's going to be his land when we're finished with it." And so they sent the road commissioner to ask the African-American man living in their home place, the Burleson home place, where he wanted the road put. But it wasn't even limited to Bob and Mitty Bell. They gave two acres of their land on Newtown Road to the Marvin A. Nysion Church when it started in 1898. It's vacant now, in recent years, it's been called the World of Flame Church or something like that. It's still owned by the Marvin A. Nysion Church. The year that I discovered this story happened to be the year that they were building their new building over on Crane Road, and that building is on inherited land that had been sold out of the family years ago, and then the church brought it back. But Maggie and Mitty gave that land on Newtown Road for the A. Nysion Church. When Sally died in 1909, her obituary made two comments about how she treated blacks and whites equally. It said, "No advantage was ever taken of the poor, the needy, or the distressed, whether white or color. So far from this, every honest, faithful tenant had an unfailing friend and wise counselor in Miss Sally Ross. Her religion was not of the demonstrative kind, which proclaims itself publicly and on occasions where it can be seen of men. Hers was of the kind that prefers to reveal itself quietly all the year round, in the payment of honest debts, and dealing kindly and mercifully with those dependent on her, and in keeping her promises to the letter, whether made to rich or poor, white or black." white or black." The effect of this was so enduring that more than 75 years after the trial, newcomers to the Marvin area noticed the difference. One woman who bought land for a horse farm on Crane Road told my Observer colleague Steve Lytle in 1997, "When we were building this place, black folks visited. They watched out for us, helped take care of us. Some white people might have been concerned driving down this road and seeing a lot of black residents. That would have been a mistake. This is a great area to live. This is the kind of community that Marvin became because of these relationships that started at least in 1875. And they didn't end. They still haven't ended. In 1992, as a reporter for the Charlotte Observer, I was assigned to cover a community festival in Marvin at Banks Presbyterian Church. There were Banks Presbyterian, Marvin Methodist, and Marvin A. Nysian. So I had been a reporter for 10 years. By then, I knew what those kinds of things looked like. You would have everybody in the same room, blacks at these tables, blacks at these tables, everybody being nice. And that was pretty much it. I was unprepared for what I would see when I drove up into that parking lot now next to your village hall. These people loved each other. They were all over the yard, hugging each other, greeting each other. Their kids were playing together. They were eating together. And I had never seen anything like that before or since, except in Marvin. And I see it pretty much every time I have come to Marvin to any kind of event like that. When Jim and Silk, the documentary makers, decided they wanted to make this last year, I told them, "You have to come to Marvin in August and come to Banks Presbyterian for an event just like the one I saw in 1992." They said, "It will cost $25,000." I said, "Oh, we'll pay." So they did it. And that's what you saw, a snippet of what they've got there in the trailer. Those people look like what I saw when I came to Marvin. That's the time of community that you and I live in.
Thank you. Be there? Okay. Thank you, Gene. Appreciate you taking the time to come here. And again, that trailer is available on YouTube. And I think we'll hit Put That Up for those that are online and get that information. Christina, I think we're going into questions now. Any questions for Gene?
Yes, sir. We did not have any on the chat. So unless there's questions in the audience? Does anyone in the audience have any questions?
Yep. Could you say... Tell us exactly where that house is located now again.
Can you tell us where the house is located again?
Where it was moved? If you go down Newtown Road and turn right on Marvin Road and you go past Dohr Road, as soon as you see the county line sign, look to your right. It's a big yellow house overlooking...
You pass over the bridge where the water runs through. When the rain comes, that's the county line. And it's tucked in there. It's not easy to see because it's well hidden by some trees. But I noticed them moving it there. And then I think they remodeled it. I've not been in the property. So it's right on the right.
The original builder was Dr. J.J. Rung. He was the son of Lloyd Kellum, whose house also stands not far from the village hall. And the Rosses acquired it from him. They moved there. And he moved to Missouri. His grandson, Sam Ardry of Mecklenburg County, bought the house from Banks Presbyterian Church, who received it in the will and moved it to his farm in Mecklenburg County in '64. And his daughter, Sally Patterson, moved it... When she sold the farm, she moved it to where it is now and beautifully restored it.
And if I'm not mistaken, you do have books available?
Yeah, I've got them back.
Available for sale. And I would say if anyone from... That's listening, that's interested, contact our village hall and we can put you in touch with Mr. Stone and give you that book. I'm in the middle of reading it. There's a lot of names, which is challenging. But I know a lot of those names are right across the street from the village, buried in the graveyard there. We took a little tour of that. So... Any other questions from the community here? All right. Thank you. Well, thank you again for your time. Next up on the agenda, it looks like we have this guest results of resident survey, Rohit.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rohit Omamunchi. I'm the planner for the Village of Marvin. And I understand that we're having some audio issues. So I just want to ask you all, when you speak, just speak really straight into the microphone. Okay, that should be good. So we're going to talk about the resident survey. In September, October of 2019, the Village of Marvin released a survey that was put out to all households in Marvin and asked a lot of questions that would shape the policy and the actions of the government for the foreseeable future. And some of those results were... Some of them were obvious and some of them were not. The biggest issue that people had was traffic. 87% of people said that traffic was one of their top three issues in Marvin. And so that is one of the things that the council is clearly trying to reduce the traffic and not encourage development that would increase the traffic. Another positive thing... One positive thing is that over 70% of the people responded that they wanted to see more greenways and open spaces in Marvin. So we released a Parks and Greenways Master Plan update that is a very comprehensive, very dense network of greenways and parks that we will be acting on. And we will be segment by segment, a few a year, hoping to fill out that network. One thing that you may have noticed this year that the residents said 68% supported a tax increase for additional security. And this year, the council voted to increase the tax by one cent to hire an additional security officer. So the point is that the resident survey was an important tool. And we had a pretty good turnout of... You know, we expect, when we put out surveys, about 10% of people to respond to any given survey that the government puts out. And we got 18% response. So that means a lot of Marvin residents are interested in the fate of the community. And that's really inspiring to see. So the results of the survey... And I'm just introducing this now because a lot of the rest of this town hall will be... It will be clear that the resident survey results influence the policies and decisions of the council. That's really all I have. There's a poster out in the lobby that shows some of the highlights of the survey. There's also packets on the table of the results. So you can see that if you're here or you can get that online from our website.
Julie's getting the PowerPoint.
Are we... Since I have a minute, I suppose, I could take a question or two about that survey. Tanner is going to probably switch the mic. He probably has only mine on right now.
Hello. I would highly recommend. There's a lot of really good information there. And, you know, I'm new to the council. But a lot of the reason that we're having this town hall and a lot of the reason we're putting all of this together is to be transparent and to share information, share the input that you've given us and let us do the same. So it's a communicative effort. But I would highly recommend looking at some of this. I mean, I've gone through it. There are things I've gone through several times and missed the first time or the second time. But it's valuable information. It's information that you provide to us. And we're doing what we can to act on that and to take care of the constituents out there. And so, again, if you go by it, please pick a copy of it up and take a look at it. There's a lot of really good information in there.
Okay. Is... Okay. So are there any other questions? Don't see any on chat. And so, I mean, you can look at the survey. There are a lot of good results. It would take me a long time to go through them right now. So I guess we can just move on to the next topic, which is the... About the Parks and Greenways Master Plan. So our last master plan was in 2008. And so it was time for an update. The plan itself, the network of greenways is largely based on the 2013 map that we had a lot of public input for. And that was mostly untouched for this update. But the corridors that we showed, which shows most of the thoroughfares and all the neighborhoods. The goal of this network is to connect all neighborhoods in Marvin to each other and to future destinations within Marvin and destinations just outside of Marvin. Currently, it's difficult to get around. Most neighborhoods, you have to drive to get anywhere. And so that's something that, you know, the future of Marvin, you know, that wouldn't be an issue. The... There are a few components of this master plan update that are really... It's more than just a plan. It's an actionable plan where you have the network map, but you also have funding opportunities. And then you also have grants. You have coordination with other regional, federal agencies so that this can actually happen. And also in the hallway, there was the map and the table. And I kind of wish we had that up here, too. But the map and the table, you can peruse it at your own time. And it's also in the Land Use Plan. So there are plenty of opportunities to find where this map is and to see... Ah, he has lost him. Bring it in now. So to see how your neighborhood will be connected and in the prioritization as well, the long-term goal is, of course, to have this whole network built out. But of course, it is also a plan. And we hear that people have certain... You know, they don't want the certain segment right outside their house. That's okay. Because in the context of a plan, we can always adjust some segments based on what the feeling is when we are actually about to implement it. But the main takeaways are that we intend to connect every neighborhood in Marvin with each other. And it's a pretty ambitious plan. But it is a plan that could be accomplished in 20 years. This master plan was adopted by the council in May of 2020. There's also this accompanying table that shows what the segments on the map are. Together, it is the master plan map. Yes, there are copies of the Land Use Plan... Sorry, the Parks and Greenways Master Plan outside on the desk and also on our website. Austin, we do have a website page that has all of the documents that we are showing today, right?
Yes. If you go to the planning and zoning page on the website, there are copies of all adopted plans.
Okay, great. So we can also give out the web link for... Oh, yeah, yeah. I'll read those links. So under the planning and zoning page on our website, there are links to all of the adopted and draft plans that we're presenting tonight.
Hey, Rohit, there's a question from the audience.
Okay.
Can you discuss the results for wanting commercial development in the Village Center?
Sure, sure. Let me read that question. It's a long one. Okay, so the current survey report... Seems like the questions in the report have been reworded. Now they're pretty misleading. Okay. The report says most respondents stated they would like to see commercial development outside the Village Center, preferred location in Village Center. Okay, yeah. That was something that we left on the options by accident. But in the survey, there was a question that said, "Would you like to see commercial in Marvin?" And if you answered yes, then you were directed to a question that said, "Where." And the question was not supposed to have that option. But by leaving that option, we showed that most of the people who wanted to see commercial only wanted to see it in the Village Center district. So sorry to the person who thinks that that was misleading. That was not meant to be that way. But it does show that people... 75% of people opposed commercial, additional commercial. And of the people that supported commercial, they said the Village Center district was the most preferred place. So our future Land Use Map, which is the next topic... So I won't go into that too much. But the future Land Use Map shows potential locations of additional commercial. And it's very... It's pretty mild. It only includes the Village Center district and one other location that we currently have a zoning application for. Let's see. So to be clear, 54% were in favor of a Village Center. Okay, so, yeah, I see what you're saying. 60% of those 54 want a commercial Village Center. That's not what that means to say. There are two separate questions. 60%... Okay. 54% were in favor of a Village Center was one question. And then the other question was, "If you didn't want... If you wanted to see commercial, where would you want to see it?" And 60% of the people who answered that answered Village Center. So thanks for your question, person in the audience, in the virtual audience.
Great question, by the way.
Okay. Awesome. I see that the link to the plans are up on the WebEx, so if you're listening in virtually, you can click that link to look at any of the plans. Okay, I see a question in the audience. Can someone give her a microphone, please? Okay.
Christina's coming with a mic.
So I see, I see our proposed trail map, and it looks like there's something, there's a smaller patch of existing trails, and then there's proposed trails and programmed trails. What is the difference between those?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that. I'd love to speak to that. So existing trails, clearly those are the ones that exist today, you can go there. Proposed, the difference between proposed and programmed is, proposed are trails that we would want to build, and programmed, in some way, we are, we have taken a step towards accomplishing that trail, whether it is negotiations with the property owner or HOA, or we have established easement already. In what, in some cases, we have the easement, in some cases, we are promised the easement, and that's usually by an HOA. And so I can look at, and Providence Road is slated to be wired, and in that project, they will also be building trails on both sides of the road. So that's the difference between proposed and programmed in this map. Another question there.
Yes, on the trail, are we talking about strictly a pedestrian trail? Or is it for bicycles? Or is it for bicycles and horse trails? Or can you clarify?
Sure, sure, I can allow me on that. So all of our greenways are meant to be multi-use, but we have broken them down into four tiers, and some of them will be four to six-foot natural trails, and it's pretty clear just by the texture that bicycles wouldn't be comfortable riding those trails. Those are going to be your neighborhood trails, your low-traffic trails. And some of those trails are going to be your typical side of the road, really wide, eight to 12 feet asphalt trails. And those trails could be ridden by cyclists, but with eight to 12 feet, you would definitely have enough room for that. And so, yes, we've accounted for, you know, some trails should be for pedestrians only, and some trails could have cyclists on it. But you can also see the breakdown of which trail would be what type. On the table, on the table here would show each segment and what type of trail it would be.
The question is, I'm asking it, for the community, and to his point, he's asking about, are there any questions in Cheryl's plan within the Village Marvin proposal?
So several of the natural service trails could also be ridden on horseback. The Chimneys Trail is one of the main established ones. Chimneys of Marvin is on Wax on Marvin Road, and there's a trail behind it. And any of the natural trails could also be ridden by horses, but we don't quite have a network of specifically horse trails, but there are trails that could also be ridden on horse. Yes?
I'm liable to make this work.
No, hold on. Let's get you a mic. There's no way that people, yeah, the people virtually would not, would not be able to hear your question. Yeah, thank you.
For the ones that you haven't started yet, for the section that proposed specifically C9, what does that process look like?
Hmm, it's a good question. So the first process, the first part of the process is talking to the landowners. In a lot of cases, people own the property to the middle of the road. So the first step, whether we can have the trail or not, is whether the property owner is willing to either sell an easement or give us the easement. Then we, if we have all of the property owners in a certain, you know, length that we could build a trail at one time, then we start, we bid for the design, and then we bid for the construction. That process, it takes a year plus per segment, so it is, it is a long and arduous process, but for good reason, because we do want the segments specifically to go where they're most desired by the people who live in that area.
So to clarify, not all landowners who are on the map, even if it's on the property, have been contacted? So the plan may include plans that have not been discussed with landowners?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. The proposed segments are, are, they were, the map was discussed through, in thorough public input in 2013, and that was before me, so I can't speak to-
Me, too.
Yeah, I can't speak to who was there, which landowners were there and who were not. But in any case, we would approach those landowners before starting any segment.
And then what, so that segment, C9, goes right down Newtown Road? What do we do about, just wondering, in general, like, the traffic? Yeah, the traffic that's associated with that, right? Like, so how far off the main road is it, just neighboring? Like, like a sidewalk effectively, but a nice, what do we do about traffic to help make this safe? Because every time I hear a car drop a wheel off in my front yard, I think, oh, God, there was my grandmother. Somebody's killed my-
Right, right. I think this plan is definitely too early to be answering those questions, but they're definitely good questions, and when it comes time to implementing that segment, we would have many more of those answers.
But it is something that's taken into account.
Yes, yes, we would make sure, and when we, when we bid for design, they will advise, their engineers, whoever we hire to design this, they will make sure that the trail that we intend to build is safe. Okay, let's see, I have a question back there. Let's, yeah, I think this is going to be the last question for this topic.
I wanted to ask you a question, piggyback on what the lady just brought up. First of all, with COVID, we have met a lot of neighbors that we didn't know. I live on Providence Estates, so there's been a lot of walkers. It's been wonderful, and I am all for that. However, when this proposal came up, being on the HOA for the neighborhood, I had a lot of horse people just ask tons of questions. If you look at Laurel Wood, it's a lot of twists and turns, hills up and down. Even though we have already lowered the speed limit, it continues to be a problem. And we are truly concerned that if that opens up, and I don't know how you plan on doing it, it would truly be a problem, because as it is, we have riders that are on the grass, and the horses get spooked. So that would be a problem for the rider, the owner of the property, and the horse. For people that are riding bicycles, that's another problem, because you come through corners that are just blind spots. So I would like to hear from you, and I know it's early, how would you address that? Because it is truly a problem for the community, and I don't want to see you guys get sued or us sued. So how do you do it? Thank you.
Yeah, we have a traffic calming program coming up, and I think Christina, our minister here, would probably speak to that more, but when we determine that the speeds are higher than they should be, we will, we will investigate that and install certain traffic calming. Yeah, once we own the road, we'll install certain traffic calming devices that would make sure that that doesn't happen if it is in excess of, if the speeds are in excess of what they should be. But I'm sorry, that's the last question that we have on this topic, we have to move on. But, yeah.
Questions at the end?
Yeah, yeah, we can, you can ask the questions at the end, and we can also get our cards, and we can, we can be in touch after this meeting. Sorry, we have a lot of topics to cover. Yeah. Amy's mic, please.
Okay, just a quick point, and that's a great question and a great point, and I don't want to lose sight of this, but ma'am, you made a great point of, and you just brought up a quick thought, is that being a part of the HOA, and you've sent this out in email, and I just want to be as transparent as we can be, if you have an HOA event, and you know that you're going to get together with your HOA, we are all open to come to one of those HOA events to have that discussion, so it doesn't take three more years to figure it out or have it discussed. So we're more than welcome to, if you have an HOA event, you know you have a planned meeting or whatever the case may be, reach out to us, and we would love to be able to come and be a part of that and ask those questions. So thank you, it was a very good question, thank you for doing that.
That's great. That's a great question.
So next up, we have the land use plan, public input. We have Rohit, right, it's right on time, it looks like. So we're on number seven, correct?
Yes, that's right.
And you taking questions during this?
Yeah, we'll be taking questions. This is, this is a public input of land use plan, so we'll be taking questions for this as well. I do see that we have a question on screen. I'll have to answer that at a later time about the Wax on Marvin Road. Yeah, I can answer that one later at the end. So the land use plan is a massive overhaul to our 2004 land use plan, which was just a three-page document at the time that set out the goals for development in the Village of Marvin. In 2017, we embarked on a new, big overhaul that would include a lot of actionable items and specific development goals as we approached a built-out Marvin. Clearly, the residents' surveys showed that there is a resistance to density, there is a resistance to commercial activity, and there is an interest in preserving open space and natural features. So the land use plan very much reflects that, and it's also reflected in the future land use map, which, let me grab that real quick. So in this future land use map, the yellow and orange areas are residential, and if you just, if you just glance at the map, you'll see that a fully built-out Marvin is still almost completely residential, and there was 54% support of Village Center. Now, that may seem just a little over half, only 35% said no, 11% were undecided. Assuming that half and half, that's 60/40, but I shouldn't assume. But the point is, we are studying Village Center district as well, and in that Village Center, very small portion of that would be perfect. And this, again, all conceptual, all still subject to discussions and public input. This is the first of many public input meetings that will be had about the Village Center. The land use plan today is considered to be discussed in terms of, do, do we as a whole, as a village, as the staff, do we think that this is the way to go? And if you have any comments about development around or in Marvin, this is definitely the time to ask all of those questions. Yeah, when we get it, when we get it, we can, we can take a minute to show maps if you'd like. All right. Question that Mr. Mayor Polino is asking is, how built-out are we in Marvin? I've calculated that we only have about 400 acres left. That, I can't quite tell you how much percentage that is, but there are just a handful of major properties that are in and around Marvin that are left to be developed. Pretty much all of them will be residential if they develop, but they're all agricultural now, which is why they haven't been. That would add around 100, 150 homes, and that's, that would be it, and all of the major parcels of Marvin would be built out.
Does that, does that include the district? Does that include the 400 acres?
Yes, that 400 acres does include the Village Center district. Okay, let's see, so I think I've said everything, and you have the, also the land use plans are available in the counter and also online. So this is also the time to take questions from anyone in the council to consider answering any questions. So you have a mic, you have a question? Go ahead.
I have another one, sorry. That's why I said it wrong. So with regards to the, you mentioned a little while ago that people are against high density and increasing traffic in Marvin, right? Any of us that have sat at the intersection that Jean was discussing earlier to get down to the beautiful house, we know that traffic can be an issue. So with the land use plan as it is now, can you define what residential densities are being examined for that?
Right, right. So townhomes and apartments were so low in favor that they're pretty much not, they're not on the table. There are some neighborhoods that had patio homes. Patio homes are single-family, kind of close together, we have 8,000 square foot lots, and that, there are two of them currently, and one of them is to be built behind the Publix and Marvin Gardens. And they are also age-restricted, which means, no, we come to that agreement so that there are not any increase in, you know, the school, there's no stress, not more stress on the school system than there would have been if you developed a one-lot-per-acre density. That is, by the way, the overarching theme in Marvin is a one-lot-per-acre density, and that's pretty not dense, especially considering our neighbors Waxaw were building apartments in Charlotte, of course, no. That said, in the Village Center, the prevailing, it's still early, but the prevailing theme is still to not, either to not have more than one unit per acre in that area, but since it would be more condensed, they may be considering closer-together, closer-together homes, but still not more than one per acre in keeping with the theme, the character of Marvin. Conservation subdivision, yeah, conservation subdivision is the term for that. But in townhomes, apartments, I mean, again, we're still early, but the temperature for that is very cold. Does that answer the question?
That makes sense. I mean, because basically, we could take, we could take land, and if 100 acres, well, let me use a smaller, say 20 acres yields 15 homes, and our 16 homes with everything full-on, that's called buy right. We could take a smaller footprint of a home, still allow 15 homes, and create an environment that makes it look more rural, where you have more open space on that, and you're still getting the same yield. Those, it's been said that those type of developments, a lot of times, attract 55 and older, because there's usually less land to take care of on their own property, and which is a domino type, too, because typically, the 55 and older are done with the little ones at school, the biggest cost to the Union County is schools. So age-restricted is another thing that we've done for the community, we have that coming in the third place now, which will be right behind Publix, if that helps, with conservation. It's called conservation subdivisions.
Okay, but the idea then is still to keep everything roughly the same with one, one home per acre?
Our family.
Over, there's four years.
Right, and, yeah, our four is the density. And again, that is very, still very early. You know, there is a strategic plan committee that will start meeting in October to deliberate the details of this district, but that's where we're starting from right now. Okay. I think we'll alternate from questions online and questions in the audience, if you'd like. So next, we'll take questions from the WebEx.
Sorry, Jamie, I'm trying to read your handwriting. Two ET, two new ETJ districts, page seven. Why is the council planning to open up Marvin to non-residents of Marvin who do not pay taxes? What parcels is the council planning on regulating in the ETJ district?
That is a great question. Thank you for asking that. ETJ stands for extraterritorial jurisdiction, and it's a way to regulate the development outside, immediately outside of our actual borders, in a way that we would regulate them even though they're not in Marvin. So the map does show that there are areas that, that are not in our limits, but are proposed to be in this ETJ. And the reason for that is that there are several parcels that are undeveloped that would, may, let's say may, develop in a way that is not compatible with Marvin. The council's interest would then be to ask the county if we instead could have that regulation over those properties, and then we would be, we would impose much less density than what the county would allow immediately outside of our area. And I suppose-
I'll just make a quick comment on that. We just recently formed, it's called WUMA, Western Union County Municipal Association. Basically, Weddington, ourselves, Mineral Springs, Wesley Chapel, and I believe Stallings. We are, we want a seat at the table at Union County, because if it's not within our jurisdiction, but they're willing, Union County may be willing to give a little more as far as density, those sort of things, and all we're asking for is a seat at the table. There are power numbers, we just met for the first time, we're meeting again, it's an open meeting, it'll be at Weddington, last Thursday of this month, at Weddington Hall, and I can get you information on that if you're interested in sitting in on that. But it's, at the very beginning, and again, one of the comments that kind of concerned all of us as elected officials, there was a comment from one of the county commissioners that said, "What's in it for us? If we allow them to sit at the table, what's in it for us?" Well, we form these communities for a reason, I believe. We all moved here for a reason. We want to have a say in what gets built here and what doesn't get built, and then right at our borders. We'd like a say in that, especially if it's on incorporated Union County.
Uh, yes.
You have another question here online? Do you want to take this one?
Let's, I said I would, we would alternate, just so that people don't feel like they're not being heard here, so, well.
With regard to the commercial center, what type of commercial entities are you thinking of? Or would you consider?
That's a really good question. Again, I'll have to preface everything by saying, very early on, but the only, the, like, very low-intensity uses would be considered not big-box stores or big-anger stores like that. I, let's see, we have limited cafes, you know, specialty stores-type shops in mind. I, let's see, we have limited cafes, you know, specialty stores type shops in mind, as well as offices, like professional offices. And I, yeah, let council members speak to that as well.
First off, that's a very good question. And there has been, and again, going back to, a lot of information's been put out that I would call propaganda, call it, you know, fake news, whatever you want to call it. And, you know, that has, it's a great question, and it's one that we're going to address. And I want to tag on to what Rohit was talking about with the land use plan, because early on, there was some information that went out that was extremely misleading, extremely misleading certainly to, for the council that they, that are up here now. There's a lot that has to be done, even from where the stage we are right now. There was information that was sent out saying this, we were going to act on this back in the early spring. We have the, we have the councils and the, that go through all of this stuff, and they bring it back to us, and we send it back to them, and then there's still public input. So, great question, and that's a question that we need, we will answer, and we'll get through that, but we have to go through all, there are many different steps that get us there. And that question, I hope, was brought up because of the fact that you were giving information that was probably incorrect. You're not, you're in there, then that's good. I'm not, not trying to... Right, sure, understand. So, you know, Rohit was saying, you know, we'll get to that. That is something that we, we discuss and we will address. But there's a lot of steps to go that we have to, the hurdles that we have to go over in public input meetings to, to address that.
Jamie, can I get the next question from online?
Here, Rohit. This says, the survey says residents are in favor of a Village Center, but they want it to be pedestrian oriented and small neighborhood scale. Yet this planning priority was removed from the current draft of the land use plan. Why?
Priority was, there is a, there's a Village Center section, and there is a commercial section. There was some discussion that says the commercial section should be applicable still to the commercial parts of the Village Center district. So in section 5E, it talks about limited pedestrian scale, attractive neighborhood scale development. And so that is what you should look to see. The same principle of commercial would be considered in the Village Center district. Okay. I think the person in the back is the next question. Can someone give her a mic, please? Oh, someone, someone has a mic already, okay, sorry.
So the, the perspective of putting Village Center, I listened to a portion of the WebEx a couple of weeks ago for Marvin School Road and Newtown Road, that intersection. And that seemed to be a very reasonable and logical place, favorable place for organizations in the Village Center. One of the things that's been significant in the Village of Marvin through the ordinances for land, in land use plan has been the, the aspect of view shed buffers as you go through the major thoroughfares through the village. And I'm just curious, have the perspective of the council on preservation of view shed buffers on the major thoroughfares through Marvin, which is something that gives us, I think, a very unique characteristic.
That's a great question. Yes, the council, so I'll let them speak to it.
I don't think we're, sorry. I don't think there are changes as far as view shed and the buffers. I don't think we want to change that and, and, you know, create an environment that's going to totally, totally change what, you know, Marvin was from before. So I'm, I'm not sure what concerns you have. Are you, you concerned that we're going to allow smaller... Yeah, we've seen that happen at, you know, if you look at Coles. Now, that's not Marvin, and that's Union County. So that's the difference between what Union County, I can guarantee you right now, if you drove by on, on, is that Gray Road? And you looked at Starbucks, you'd probably see garbage cans sitting out, because that's where they, that's where the design of it. So we try and put as much thought into the buffering between, and I think you'll see that in when Publix is finished, that's opening up, I think, by the end of the month possibly, or...
There's no public date yet.
No public date yet, sorry. But it's coming soon, and we'll have a grand opening. But a lot of thought was put into that, and that's our first commercial area, which was on Newtown and 16. A lot of thought was put into the thing. So I, I don't think there's any, any, I guess, direction of going to shrinking that by any means or changing that ordinance for that, so I don't think that's the plan. If it is, I haven't heard.
Do we have a question from, next question from internet?
We do. While only a small majority, 54%, want a Village Center, 46% are not in favor, and most survey responses desire no commercial and resist impactful development changes, why is the town aggressively moving forward with commercial development?
That's, that's a good question. It's a little misleading to say that 46 are not in favor, because 35% are not in favor, with 11% undecided. I said before, not to assume, it could go either way, but it's 34 to 35. And to say that the village aggressively moving forward, it's not, it's also not fair to say, because the council has not decided yet that they would or would not have a Village Center. It's just that such a project involves so many different steps before we can even figure out whether you can do such a thing, that we need to move on it early and make a lot of steps before we decide that we could or could not do it. In fact, the feasibility study, we haven't even started yet, but we would soon, would then determine, you know, how low density could we go for this district to be feasible? And that would tell the council whether we could go ahead with this or not. This land use plan, again, it's just a plan. It's a guide to direct the future of the village, and all of the, the actions in it are just for the council to look back and say, "Okay, this is what we think we should do," then study it and decide if it's feasible. See, we have time for a few more questions. Wait, there's a council comment.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. That was a really good question. I'm glad that someone asked that. One of the reasons that we, one, this has been talked about, a Village Center district, whatever, a commercial district, whatever you guys want to call it, for a number of years, well before my time. And we have been approached over the years by the landowners that are along this corridor. They want to do something. They want to do something special. They want to leave a legacy for their families. We want to work with them, because we want to make it special. We don't want big box stores. I don't want a mattress store, anything like that. We're really trying to preserve the quaintness, quaintness of Marvin. And if we are not involved, then these landowners can go to Union County, they can deannex, and you're going to get a mattress store. You're going to get stuff that you don't want. And so in order for, this is my opinion, in order for us to make sure that Marvin remains the wonderful place that we love to live, we have to be involved in that. And so that's one reason. Again, this is, this conversation has been going on for years, so it's not like it just came out of the blue in the last, you know, few months. It's, it's been something that has been talked about over numerous councils. And landowners, again, want to work with the village to make something really special and really unique. So I hope that helps clarify that.
If I could add one more thing, and it's not to say what she is suggesting, that that, oh, that won't happen. It has happened. It has happened under my watch in 2013, when a developer came to us and high level wanted 200 H, kind of like a, it didn't fit our land use plan as it exists. So there was never any official meeting. So he chose to go straight to a state senator and ask to be removed from Marvin. They did remove him. And that location is, as you, if you're familiar with the Andes, just north of there, there is townhomes that are put in there. That was because of the, is it townhomes or... On the left, in that area right there is where, that was where the property was deannexed from Marvin. And again, we had never had a meeting with this developer, but they chose to go around, meet with the state senator. State senator got the votes at the state level, and they were able to deannex from that. So I would rather have a say in what happens in our town, and I think that involves working with the landowners that kind of came to us and said, "We want to do something special," so... Is there a question back there? Okay.
Thank you.
We have another question.
This one's easy. Rohit, can you tell me with at least 54% accuracy, why did they move that wall at Publix at the intersection? They tore it up, they put in footings and rebar, then they moved it all. Do you have any idea?
I think that's a question we're going to have to answer over email thread. Got to do some asking.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Do we have a...
I think we have some other questions in the audience. Two more questions in the audience, or do we have something from the online?
We do have online, Mayor. Hold on, one moment.
Okay, suppose we'll take one more question from online, and then questions from this lady over here, and then we'll be ready to move on to the next topic.
I think maybe this question was answered. If a Village Center is not planned, is there a risk landowners deannex from Marvin and the town is left with development that is undesirable?
Yes, that was...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. The floor mic, please?
And it doesn't even happen.
Oh, okay. So this is really a follow-up to the follow-up question. What are the measures, or are there any measures that we can take to make it attractive for the landowners to stay in Marvin? You know, marketing of the Village of Marvin. So the landowners are kind of the first part of that question, and then what can we do to, because Marvin kind of looks like Swiss cheese a little bit on the map, and so that's where we get into the issues of, well, this is not in Marvin, so whoever wants to put something up there is going to be right on our doorstep. And you guys talked about the ETJ, was it ETJ? So that's maybe one thing. But what are some measures, or is the village considering measures to market itself, to promote voluntary annexation?
We do have a campaign that we are putting together for those neighborhoods. We call them the doughnut holes, that are right smack in the middle of Marvin, that fit the Marvin profile as far as what, you know, our ordinances are. And we're actively trying to figure out, okay, what can, can we show them that shows that they should be a part of Marvin? Because right now, I always joke that they, they're getting representation without taxation in the form of the officers that we used to put before we had the ramen lines. We were paying for that, but we were getting complaints when they wouldn't show up on duty on a regular basis. So there, there is a plan for that, and if you wanted to speak one out, the other...
Yeah, there was, there was two parts to that question. What do you propose to give to the landowners to make them more interested in staying in Marvin? Okay, thank you. There does have to be a little bit of a give and take, as Councilman Van Berg said, to, to keep the character of Marvin while allowing some of the things that a landowner would want to see. They, they may want to see townhomes, but we don't want to see townhomes. There's got to be somewhere in the middle where they say, okay, you can have those, let's say you have 10 acres, you can have 10 houses, single-family detached, that are closer together, and, but still have 10. And in exchange, have some public open space. And that would be reasonable enough compared to the current situation where you're not allowed to build anything but those 10 houses. So the developers, let's not call them, there's no developers yet, the property owners, they know that they are getting more than what they could, and that should be hopefully enough, as long as we do have the right negotiating tactics. And it's like we're out of time for this topic, but again, this is going to be discussed at length. Every strategic plan meeting is the first Thursday of the month, and every planning board meeting, which is the third Tuesday of every month at 6:30 PM, both virtual and in person. You can come as long as there's not too many people, but it's going to be virtual. So that's when you can not only listen on to the conversations as they evolve, but also proposing public comments, and they would be addressed at the meeting.
And I, I just want to add one more thing. But not long ago, the state passed a law that, you know, basically, for those builders, they, they're not limited. Where we used to have very strict on what they could build with, what siding would look like, materials used, that's common. So if a developer wants to come in and build that, they have the right to build that. In the past, that wasn't the case. So with this district that you're talking about, what it looks like, that becomes, that gets a little tricky, I think, from trying to get the buy-in, if you will, to have it look a certain way, because that jacks up the cost when a landowner or developer, anyone wants to get to that look when they're, you know, we have limits of what we can do to ask for that.
So that's all from me. I will give the floor to Austin Yao.
Okay, next up on the agenda, we have Austin Yao, call for volunteers. Hard cut.
Can I get the floor mic on?
You are.
Can you hear me? Okay. Hello?
Test, you want to use this one?
Is there a way you turn this on?
Don't turn, don't turn the mic off or on. He'll do it from the stage.
Okay. Sorry about that. I'm going to be brief. We would love to have more people volunteer for our advisory boards. We've been fortunate over the last few months to have so many more people volunteer. We've appointed two new members to the planning board, two new members to the parks, directing ways board. We've reappointed almost the entire Board of Adjustment. We've appointed four people to our website committee, which has just finished its work. And we've appointed eight people to our Village Center Strategic Plan Committee. We still have two vacancies on the Board of Adjustments as alternates, and one vacancy on the Village Center Committee. So please apply, and even if the vacancies are filled, we will hold your application for a year. So if any new vacancies arise, we'll be contacting and considering. And especially, I know we don't have that many, don't have any teenagers here or any young people, but we would love to have younger demographic volunteers as well, because they are our representative. That's all I have.
And I will turn this over to Chris, let's see, Christina.
So next, we're going to talk about Village Hall, and took down some notes here, so I can make sure I get my information right. The plans for Village Hall initially started back in 2016, Rob Laiden. And those plans were finalized in 2018 as far as the architectural design, the site plan, on the corner lot of Newtown and Marvin School Road. This property was donated to the village back, I don't know, maybe 2015-ish, by the Toll Brothers, the Pulte Development. From my understanding, the initial deeds were not restricted for the purposes of Village Hall particularly. The initial transfer, with that initial transfer canceled, at a later date, decided to impose deed restrictions upon the property to ensure it was used for a public purpose, and that still exists today. So back in 2018, we actually put out bids for the plans that we just discussed, and they were basically double of what we anticipated. Cancel had saved about $1 million to pay for Village Hall, and they came back at right close to $2 million. Majority of that differential was with some of the site work that was needed there. that was needed there, because that area is kind of low-lying. Um, so what we did at that time was we kind of stepped back and looked at different options. Cancel really wanted to explore what options were available to kind of reduce those costs. Those plans included retrofitting different houses along the Newtown corridor. I think we looked at maybe two or three homes and retrofitting those. We also looked very extensively at a long-term lease at our current Village Hall site. And we would basically have new construction there with the plans that we already had. Uh, that was later found to be not a feasible option. And then, uh, we're currently looking at constructing on a different site with an existing landowner who wants to start some development with the Village Center District and has interest in cost-sharing the infrastructure. We're almost at the end of exploring these options, and we're currently assessing the feasibility on a corner lot of Wax Town Marvin and Newtown Road. That property is currently owned by Tim Venture. Cancel unanimously decided at one of the last meetings to redo the architectural design. I think that we have a picture of the previously approved plans and, yeah, which is here. So Cancel desires to change that, that architectural altogether. So we're currently working on that as well. If another site is selected, other than the Newtown Marvin Road site as initially intended, the current Cancel is committed to maintaining this site for public use purposes, such as green space, farmer's market, amphitheater, or other options that are for public purpose. So that's where we're at. Hopefully, we'll have some decisions soon. We have a timeline to hopefully break around by the summer of next year. So hopefully, we'll have a new Village Hall soon.
Christina, would you like to talk about the facade? Okay.
Are there any questions in the audience or via internet? No? Okay.
So thanks, we have Village Center District. We have both Rohit and Christina.
I'm just gonna open this door, Rohit, while you're coming up, or you have a mic. So this has been a topic, as obviously just discussed a few minutes ago, about Rohit. Excuse me, we are currently, um, looking at economic feasibility of this district. And Rohit can speak more to it as he's more directly involved. At this point in time, no decisions have been made on whether or not we were pursuing this district. We are looking at the feasibility of it. The planning board has discussed a lot of options in terms of what they would like to see. But none of the uses or anything has been decided at this specific time. Rohit, I'm gonna feel that you're speaking this.
I'll let you go on. Okay. Hello, hello. Okay. So a lot of the Village Center District comments go into the land use plan, of course. And so we talked about it at, in the land use plan part. Um, but I also wanted to just talk about where we are in that process, because it is of concern to a lot of residents, to make sure that we, if we're going to go ahead with this, that we do it right. So where we are right now is that the council has created, established a committee, we're calling the Strategic Plan Committee, that will meet once a month for the next eight months and deliberate on the finer details of this district. And they are composed, some of the property members, some of the property owners, some are planning board members, and some are residents of Marvin at large. So together, having all types of voices at the table, that should hopefully end in a product that is a happy medium from everyone's desires. Also, we had a workshop with a nonprofit group in June who told us a lot of good recommendations based on their expert opinions from various fields, engineering, planning, landscape architecture, about what we could do in this district. Answer a lot of the questions. Mayor Polino often says, "We don't know what we don't know." But these people do know what we don't know. So we had them on board for a couple of days, and they told us a lot about what we could do with this area. And that report is also available online, the CPNI slash NC Growth Report. Finally, we are going to bid out or choose a state department for an economic feasibility study to determine, I didn't mention this before, but the low-density commercial, low-density residential that we're considering, because Marvin does want very strongly to keep even this district low-density. Would it be economically feasible? Would it be viable? Would it not fail just because it is so low-density? And so we'll make sure that it's economically viable. We'll also make sure that the traffic impacts are mitigated in every way that we possibly can before going forward with the district at all. And so those are some of the comments that I wanted to add about this district. The timeline, the detailed timeline of this district will be discussed in detail on the September 24th work session.
That's right, that's right. That's my understanding?
Yeah. That's the date, right?
Yes, that is the day.
Yeah, that's the date. September 24th, um, work session. That's when we'll go into the detailed timeline of this district, if it were to happen. And again, it's part of a plan. It's not going to happen yet. It's not decided, nothing is decided. Um, so everyone still has the opportunity to give their input on this district. We're pretty ahead of schedule. So do you want to take any questions?
Questions, Mark.
Oh, you didn't have a mic, because I took yours.
Thanks.
Okay, sure. Oh, this is a question from the Village Hall. It says, "Is there a floor plan for Village Hall available?"
There's a floor plan of the plans that were approved with the previous Cancel, and the intent is for us to keep them very similar. But we have not started on design yet for the new plans that we are proposing at a later date. So the answer is no, not currently. But we do have plans for the old.
Okay. Uh, are there any questions online?
Yes, there's another question here. I appreciate Rohit's attempt to address the question, but I still have to question why the landowners, who are likely to benefit financially, are the only residents Village officials have met with while putting this most current land use plan together?
I would say that's not true at all. The land use plan was deliberated in the planning board for four years. Several public input meetings happened in between now and then. And the planning board would like to make it clear that residents have the opportunity to come and speak about this land use plan at any meeting within the past four years. Uh, any public comments that were made in the planning board meetings were received, were considered, and incorporated. And the survey, again, the resident survey in 2019 was a major part of all of the decisions that were made, even down to the word choice about this land use plan. In fact, they had tabled the discussion of the land use plan for a while until the resident survey results were back, so that they could discuss the survey results and incorporate them into the land use plan. So there were a lot, there were a lot of ways that residents did and were able to provide their input into the land use plan, and they were definitely heard in the plan. And also, this meeting is here to provide input for the land use plan as well.
And just to be clear, as we talk to these landowners who are, I think we've identified maybe 12 or 13 landowners in the Heritage District or Central District. One of the things that struck me was, especially when you, we had Gene Stoh here early, his book, Inherit the Land. Uh, we have landowners that are talking about preservation of what is existing there. And with, with that, listening to them and what they would like, and this is a work in progress. You know, ideas are free. We're out there with just ideas right now. There's no backdoor things. We, we met with Mr. Fisher just yesterday in a special meeting. We basically started at one end of the district. Uh, we made a play on the, one property on the corner of Marvin and Newtown Road, the white house that was there. Uh, with very little addition, we thought we could get into that house, and it would be feasible for a townhouse similar to what Weddington has. And then we've just worked our way down, dealing with all. There's nobody in mind that we have, nothing in mind. And these landowners are coming to us, wanting to work with us. I, I think the biggest thing to take away is you have to understand, some of this land is very buildable. The land that we were donated on the corner, if you look at the details of that bid, you know, over half of it, or close to half of it, is for, um, dealing with the land alone. So the land that we were donated doesn't mean you can build on it. And we have some great ideas that doesn't put one building on, on that corner and creates a, a meeting place for everyone. So I think we want to explore all our options when we're talking to these landowners. At the end of the day, we may end up on that corner, building what we can build, and most likely will be over what the initial budget was, if you go back and look, which I thought was way too low anyways. But it is what it is. We got the bids we got. And we're trying to exhaust all options. There's no secret deals or trying to enrich anyone. So, but, but thank you for the question.
Are there any questions in the audience? Jamie, do you have any more? No. Okay.
Great, then we can move on to the next topic, which is the website update. Austin?
Can we change this slide, please? One more, there you go. Okay, so this is the draft of our new website that will be launching roughly, I'd say roughly a month or so. One of the goals of this website redesign was to, number one, make it more aesthetically pleasing, uh, but also to increase its functionality and ease of use. Uh, one thing you'll notice is that on this new homepage, there are a row of buttons. These are the most common things that people in the, that residents in the village look to access but have a hard time of finding. So in the future, we hope that residents will have a much easier time conducting business with the village online and finding, uh, resources in regards to meetings, plans, and that sort of thing. One good example is, um, in the past, our previous website, which we should be changing soon, uh... What did you go? Okay, okay. Uh, one thing about the previous website is that things were in multiple places, but you couldn't get to any of them. We changed that. Now everything is in one place, but you have multiple ways to get to it. So let's say you would like to reserve the barn at Marvin Eford Park. You now have the option to click the button on the home screen. You can go up to, I'm guessing it's under Government and then Park. Or you can go to How Do Why, and it'll be under Reserve the Barn. So we really hope that...
Or you could search it.
Or you could search it, yeah. So we really hope that residents find this website much easier to use and will appreciate all the hard work that is went to it from both our consultant, through Granite Sky Creative Group, as well as our website committee. Are there any questions about the new website while we're on this topic? Okay?
Got a thumbs up.
Jamie, do you have any questions? So now we're gonna move along to the referendum questions. I'm sorry, I'm not used to this much. To the referendum questions, and I have some information that I'll actually, actually read. The information provided and discussions herein are intended for educational purposes only. I think we actually have a slide of those referendum questions, if you can kind of advance the slides that people could see.
Should be two slides.
So there's two questions, two yes or no questions that will be on the November ballot. The first one that you see here is, "Shall the ordinance changing the Village of Marvin's form of government from mayor, cancel to cancel manager be approved? Yes or no?" And in this first question, it refers to the form of government, which we currently operate under a cancel-mayor form of government. When Marvin incorporated in 1994, there were less than 300 citizens. Often, in smaller municipalities, the mayor is utilized for more day-to-day operations, because there are very few services, staff, and citizens. As municipalities grow, it is not uncommon to see changes in governmental forms that promote more oversight of staff and continuity of quality operations. In the mayor-cancel form of government, which is our current form now, the governing board is responsible for both policymaking and day-to-day administration. This is what Cancel feels they need to move away from. In the cancel-manager form of government, the governing board is responsible for policymaking while a professional manager is hired, and the responsibility for implementing such policies through day-to-day administration. Over 88% of municipalities in North Carolina with a population of 5,000 to 10,000 have a manager-cancel form. The second question, if you can advance the slide, please. There you go. Is, "Shall the ordinance allowing the mayor of the Village of Marvin vote on all matters be approved? Yes or no?" And this question, again, results, um, I'm sorry, relates to the mayoral vote. In every public meeting, a quorum of the board is needed in order to promote, uh, to properly conduct business, I'm sorry. For Marvin, this means three members of Cancel must be present. This could include the mayor. However, the mayor currently only votes in the case of a tie. In order for the board to approve any ordinance or agreement or contract on the same day it is introduced, three out of four Cancel members must be in attendance. This does not include the mayor. So if there are more than two absences from the Cancel members, not including the mayor, or there is a Cancel member that needs to abstain from voting, business may be delayed. This problem could be reduced when the new Cancel seat is added after the election of November of 2021, as three of five members of Cancel must be in attendance, not including the mayor for immediate passage. Some people believe that every elected official should vote on matters, while other people believe that the mayor leading the discussion should not. The village wants its residents to be informed on these issues. I will open it up for questions and for discussions of both those in favor and opposition of the proposed changes. If there are any questions.
Did I hear you just mention that in 2021, we will be moving to five Cancel members?
Yes, at the previous election, there was a referendum that asked everyone if they were in favor of adding a new additional Cancel member seat, and the majority of folks said yes to that referendum. So that will take place in November of 2021.
So what we would be then doing if we were saying the mayor would have a vote would essentially be out of the number of six?
You mean, you mean after the number, November of 2021?
Yes.
So that, whenever the referendum passes, if the referendum passed this November, it would take into effect, and it would last two years or until it was changed by, I'm sorry, it would, it would last until it's changed again, which can't be greater than two years after the passage. Does that make sense?
Yes. The answer's yes. It would be six.
Okay.
The plan is...
So, so the board would essentially be six, with the mayor as a voting member?
Correct. When it passes, when we, when we put it on the, uh, when we put it on the ballot, um, last year, to add a fifth Cancel spot, at the time, the Council at the time, the plan was to add one in '21, and then to add another one in '23. So the plan is then to have seven. And you start to not have some of the issues of people being absent on purpose, um, people being absent for health, family reasons. So at that point, then, you know, it's, you, we would have seven.
And if we were to do that and then get to six, wouldn't that potentially create a number of 3-3 votes without a mayor to break a tie?
Say it again, John.
If you were to, if we're going to five Cancel people in two years in 2021, this gets approved to make the mayor a-voting, then you have six. You have 3-3 votes.
Yeah.
Who breaks the tie?
You wouldn't break the tie. That's when the sausage making comes in. That's when people gotta start having conversations and trying to change people's minds. That's when people gotta start having conversations and trying to change people's minds.
Okay. And just to follow up to that, as we increase the number of council people to potentially seven, and I don't know if that would have been eight if a mayor is voting, is there still consideration to start to look at district representation in at-large?
Yes. So if, if the referendum passes and the mayor votes, sorry, if the referendum passes and the mayor votes, it would still be seven. So it would, wouldn't be a tie unless somebody was out. If we would have, if we added another council seat in '23, it would be seven if the mayor voted. So it still, so it would, there wouldn't be a tie. And at that point, if, if the council at that point felt like, okay, we've got enough people voting, everybody's consistent, then they could change the charter back and not allow the mayor to vote. So it's gotta be two years, but the charter, I mean, it can be changed back. It's happened before, you know, I don't know, a number of years ago, they went from two years to four years for the term of the mayor and then decided, oh, they didn't like that, so they were gonna go back to two years. So it can be changed. But yes, if we get to the point where we've got seven, then some at-large districts, that was kind of the plan when we, when the former council made the decision to add an additional council person, it was to then add another one in '23 and then start looking at doing districts or at-large positions.
However, the reason for this, that this is brought up, there were issues with it, and they're real-life issues. And Mayor, if you'd like to address?
Yeah, well, it's not to say it, oh, that won't happen. It did happen. And what we had is a situation with four council members and the mayor. One council member chose to sit out. For what reason, we don't know. We, we went through the process of removing him and he didn't show up for that meeting either. But for whatever reason, the council, the new council voted him off. But in that process, by not having one council member show up for 18 meetings straight, and then we had another council member who unfortunately had health issues, and God rest his soul, Nick Dispenzares recently passed away, if none of you knew that, but he had issues. So it was every meeting, I was calling him to see if I could bring him to the meeting because it eventually left us with two council members and the mayor, and I didn't get a chance to vote on anything. So we, technically, it eliminated the ability to move government forward just because of this situation. So, and quite frankly, I know when I'm voting for whoever I vote for, I'd like to know what, what their thoughts are. If they're this, especially if they're the split vote, I mean, and it really doesn't matter because if there's a 4-0 vote, it's gonna pass. If there's a 3-1 vote with the mayor on the side of the 1, it's not gonna pass. But if it's a 2-2 vote, so any way you look at it, it really, it really doesn't matter. But when it came to real-life situations where we had one choosing not to come and another council member who had health issues, we really were stuck where we couldn't act on business immediately. So that was an issue.
Question in our virtual audience?
Addressing the setup of council two, because again, I think one of the, one of the issues was that the way it was currently set up, the staff, the Marvin Village staff were basically at the whim of the council.
That, that, that's the change in government that we're asking for, to be fair. What he's referring to is, one of the reasons why we were trying to appoint Christina not as the administrator, but the town manager, is because she would take over all the responsibilities of staff and that would put us out. And I, and another real, real-life story, 2013, I was just elected. I hadn't worked with any of the staff members, and I was being asked to opine on the bonuses or anything that they got. And I had two councilmen that were on each side of each other. So we technically, even Nick always said, we don't want to be involved in the HR issues of staff, and we want, we don't want staff to be fearful of the election where, you know, they could be done. I had one administrator, one time, sat down, one vote for being removed. And when you have that, and, you know, we're looking to hire good people, and I think we're doing a really good job right now, by the way. So thank you for all the new hires and the people we have on. We want to keep them around. I don't want every two years them worrying about their job. You know, there's so many other things to worry about in our town. This charter change was for a reason, and to Christina's point is, it's, you know, we were so small back then, where the mayor ran everything. Now it's, it's getting to a point where we need management, we need true HR, and we need a, someone that they can report to, and we deal with the issues that matter with the town. And that, that was the big push for the charter change. And the reason, a lot of towns, by the way, it wasn't something we were trying to slip in or anything. They do it all the time. They've done it in the past, and as you know now, 88% of the towns in North Carolina do operate under that method just because of the sign of the town.
Thank you.
Do we have a question?
We do, Mayor. We have one from our virtual audience, and I believe you all touched on this already, but nonetheless, would it make more sense to expand the number of council members so that the mayor would not be in the position of being a swing vote?
Yeah, I think we did touch on that. I think the, the original plan was to go to six members, and in that scenario, to your point, you'd have an odd number, there would always be a decision. But if you did have a tie for the next short year or so, it would go down as a no vote on a tie right now, is the way that would work. But I think the, the plan, and again, I like the idea of districts because there's representation on the west part of Marvin, and all different districts were, you know, it becomes harder to, I think there was a lot of success in running as threes, and three people would get together and be successful in getting it, but having districts, that makes that a little more challenging. And you get better representation from the whole town, for that matter. Another question in the audience here? I hope that answers all the confusion and the information that was being put out there in the, in the past. Next up, we have Coffee with Council, and it's Jamie Long.
Thank you so much. I, I'd like to just begin with saying, each person that's here tonight, I want to thank you. And everyone that's online tonight, thank you. And this was really, you know, when this council first got together, one of the things we would, we made a list of things that we wanted to talk about, and that we want, that were important to us, and every single one of us said transparency and accountability and integrity. Transparency, it took us, there were, there were, there were items that were being put out, and like I said before, you know, there was propaganda, and it was this, and you know what, that was shame on us. But, but we, we have taken every step possible to address everything that we're doing and we're transparent about. Coffee with Council, we started this several months ago, and with Coffee with Council, we recognize that that's a way for us to be in front of all the constituents, we're right there in the middle as you're going by, and you can stop in. So we did, we do it twice a month. We do it once, that's in the middle of, in the morning, from 10 o'clock to 11 o'clock. Sometimes for me, that's not 11. I don't catch time well. And then we do it in the evenings, from 6 to 7 o'clock, or 7 o'clock to 8 o'clock. For constituents, for the, for Village of Marvin people to come in and address these questions and talk about things, and if they hear propaganda, if they hear misinformation, come to us directly and, and address it. So Coffee with Council is just one piece of the transparency puzzle that we're, that we're working on. Great job to Austin, putting together the website. So now you've got a place to go. It's information that we can push out there. But it's also, I hope, I hope that each one of you has started to see the regular emails that come out about information. We want that information out there. And to the point tonight, this council could not wait for this town hall. This was not something we had to do, but this is something that we came together, asked the council and said, you know what, there's propaganda out there, and we'll open ourselves up. We've sent information out that said to the HOA, all the HOA presidents, if you've got an HOA meeting, invite one, someone from council. So between Coffee with Council, the website, the, the emails that go out on a, on a regular basis, we want to address that, and we want to be in front of you to address all questions that, that come out. And sometimes we don't have the answer to it. Back to Coffee with Council, so for those few months that we had, and, and I know I could kind of go off on, on the tangent with this, since we started Coffee with Council, we had less than 10 people show up. We look out here tonight and we see the people that are here, and again, thank you. And the questions that you've asked, I'm delighted to give them, and I know the council's delighted to get them. We had 800 people sign a referendum about the charter change and the mayor. 800 people. And with Coffee with Council, we've had less than 10. What we got here tonight. Now, all we can do as council is, is put it out there. And my grandmother used to say, you can take the worst of water, but you can't make a drink. And I can promise you that this council, between all the initiatives we put in to, to address the transparency, we want to do it, and we want to hear what you have to say, and we want to address your questions. And thank each and every one of you for being here tonight, whether it's online or coming in person, we really do appreciate that. And we do have a schedule to look out front. One of the things of the communication pieces that we, we put, there's schedules out there, so just take a picture of them. And, and know that we're here to take care of your questions and your concerns and, and your answers. So we got some dates coming up here, but there's a, I think there's, is there not an extended list that's out in the lobby that has, that has all of the, whether it's council meetings, it's planning board meetings, PRG meetings, all of that's, all of that's included. So thank you again, and hopefully that we're taking care of, of you and everyone in the Village of Marvin, and answering your questions and taking care of your concerns.
And the only thing I'd add to that is if you plan to attend Coffee with Council, check, because it changes who shows up. We alternate, I sometimes am with Mayor Pro Tem, sometimes I'm with Jamie. But if there's an individual or a council member, or a staff member for that matter, that you'd like to have in attendance, you know, that's, we will make exceptions to make it, we just can't have three of us in that meeting, otherwise it would constitute, I guess, a form, a form which wasn't a properly called meeting. So that's why we, we gotta be careful with that. But we were flexible with that. And more importantly, to, ma'am, that you asked about the HOAs, I've, we've been to many HOAs, there was a form of presidents that got together to kind of get the communication going better, and we'd be delighted, I know a lot of them are usually at the Christmas time, we'd be delighted to show up as a council member representing. Again, it's the opinion of one that's there for you, and it's, but if there are issues, we'd be happy to address them. And we have been taking up on that in the past on another format, but this one seems to be out there for everyone, and we just hope it gets utilized a little more. Maybe if we change it to Cocktails with Council for the evening, we'll get more people to show up.
I see some, I see some headcount. Sponsored by...
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, we'd have passports for them. The officer's right over there, we'll help them. All right. Any other questions on Coffee with Council? Thank you, Jamie. Next up, speaking of deputies, I guess we're gonna really reduce the...
Is your taxpayers at work?
I just sent some texts. It said, come up on stage, and they're over there grinning. So in the recent survey, the majority of citizens spoke and said they wanted additional law enforcement. So we have hired an additional law enforcement officer, and just want to take a second to introduce Tommy Gallus and Mason Montgomery.
I'm pretty sure so to you. You guys want us to talk a little bit about who you are, and we are funding the police, we're not defunding them. So I'll let them in to speak for themselves and introduce themselves. Oh, you got one.
All right, well, I'm Mason Montgomery. I'm, I'm all out throughout the, I'm trying to help a better community. I do the best I can. If you guys have any questions, you'll send me right around to stop me and see what I can do to help.
My name is Tommy Gallus, the Union County Sheriff's Office. Been here for about 24 years. Hopefully this is where I would retire from. Got our pictures up there. You can tell I've got a nice sleek haircut now, thanks to Corona. So, but no, we're excited to be here. If you guys need us for anything, just reach out, we'll be here for you.
Thank you for your service.
Any questions?
Sean from Wazoo, you have any?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be October 6th. I know that we're gonna have some SRT vehicles there, some of our personnel gonna be there, fire UMS is gonna be there. Anything that you'd like to add? I think what are we doing, bringing our own food, bringing our own food, picnic-type style, bringing food, drinks, and so we can enjoy time together that way.
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not sure of that. Without risking any COVID issues, normally, I believe it's in August, National Night Out, and we move that to October. It should be nice weather. We're encouraging all residents to, you know, bring a picnic blanket, their own lunch, their own food, their own drinks, non-alcoholic, I think. I don't think we allow alcohol at the park, so keep it clean there. And I don't know, are we planning a movie? Okay, no movie, but just a time for fellowship, to get together, get to know these guys, which is always a good thing. And we're just glad that the community called for it, we were able to answer right away. And I would say almost 100% of that tax, all of that tax increase went to adding a second one here. Truly, truly full-time is, we would need almost five officers, but they're doing the best to mix up the times that they're out there patrolling, which is what we'd like to see, so.
Guys, just gonna reiterate, we are having National Night Out Tuesday, October 6th, 5:00 to 7:30 at Marvin Efrid Park. This council was very supportive, very insistent to try to keep things as normal as possible and to move forward with that event. So, you know, bring your mask, pack a picnic, socially distance yourself to whatever you feel necessary, but these guys have worked hard. We've got a great number of, many of our civil servants coming out. We've got a band coming, there'll be games set up, so please come and enjoy the evening, interact with your elected officials, staff, deputies, and Tuesday, October 6th, 5:00 to 7:30.
Thank you, Derek. Our partner manager. All right, so we've, we're ahead of schedule, which is good news. That rarely happens in our meetings, so. Do we have any general questions or want to go back to any of the questions from before that you feel maybe weren't fully answered or we had to cut you short? We, we do have the time, as I said before, so we have this place till 10 o'clock, but...
I think Jamie, they have some questions, but I have three questions, two of whom are related, so I'll start with that. Can I make one? Maybe not speed you up. One of the questions is, when will my road be resurfaced? The next question is, what's the status of the roundabout at Newtown and Marvin? So ironically, we just sent out a communication piece today that talked about roads and when certain roads were to be resurfaced. And so if you have not received that, please check your email because it's very informative. We have updated our website with a new assessment that was done by our engineer back in the fall of 2019. And in that assessment, we basically looked at all of the roads within the Village of Marvin, whether they're DOT roads, private roads, or Village of Marvin roads. And in that assessment, we rated them with a percentage based on different criteria. So within that assessment, we actually prescribed what the treatment methods were for our roads, the Village of Marvin roads, and when we would do that work. So that's very well defined on our website. So that's very well defined on our website. It's under Roads and Transportation. And there's just a couple of links there. And it's very user friendly to look through. And it'll tell you what year your prescribed road has treatment. And the majority of Village of Marvin roads have just recently been resurfaced. So we do not have anything but preventative maintenance on those roads, which would consist of primarily fog sealing, crack sealing, that sort of thing. So I know this may sound confusing, but recently, Canterfield Creek, Firethorn, Heritage Joe, those are a couple of roads that just got resurfaced. So the next several years, you will see us come back and put fog seal over those roads. And that basically preserves the life of those roads. Other roads that are within the village that are DOT roads, those are all obviously conducted at their maintenance schedule. And we don't know when they're going to start resurfacing those again based on budget shortfalls with DOT. We have projected somewhere in the 2023 to 2025 range of when we think they're going to start resurfacing. That could change. It's all dependent on when they start. So if you are an NC DOT road, it's going to be dependent on their schedule. And if you're unsure if you're NC DOT or Village of Marvin, if your roads were recently resurfaced, chances are they're probably Village of Marvin. If they have not been recently resurfaced, they're probably DOT or private. You can go to our website at the Roads and Transportation and look at the Excel sheets and determine whether they're, who they're owned by. Did I answer that question? The next question is, what's the status of the roundabout of Newtown and Marvin? So this has been a project that we've been working on for several years. And again, because of budget shortfalls with DOT, they have pushed this back a little further. We're looking at 2022 when that construction will start, unfortunately. So we are in the interim of providing traffic control, as you have seen with our law enforcement officers at that intersection. We will continue to do so until that roundabout is constructed. We are pushing all we can to get it done as fast as we can. We are also looking at alternative measures to address traffic in that area. We've kind of exhausted all of the options. They will not allow a four-way stop there because of the site visits issues. They will allow a no-left turn during certain hours. So that's what we're currently looking at now. And hopefully, we'll have that implemented in the next couple of months.
And if I could piggyback on that, I sit on a group of individuals under the CRTPO, which is the Charlotte Regional Transportation. And I sit on those meetings and I talk about DOT is usually represented there, talking about, you know, what has been delayed. And that's all we tend to hear, especially with the Florence. We had, a lot of DOT money has gone to fixing the roads with the most recent hurricane. The other issue is COVID. That's reduced the tax rates. So their funding isn't there. But they're still doing things. My comment to them was, we were, had Union County, and I had an opportunity to ask the question. It's like, you know, you're always telling me, and I don't even think I shared this with council yet, but you're always telling me what's been delayed. For instance, 16 widening was projected for 2023. They just announced yesterday that it's now 2030 before the widening will happen, which involves some of our walkways, 12-foot walkways and accessibility, that sort of thing. So I asked the question, all you're here to tell us what's been delayed, what can we do as a village to accelerate it? One of the suggestions they made is, well, maybe you guys could find the funding for it, however you do, and DOT would pay us back as an option. And I thought about that for a minute because some of that scares me. But in a sense, if I'm not mistaken, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we, the agreement we have with DOT is in today's dollars, if they were to start that roundabout and there was a cost overrun that wasn't expected, but for whatever reason, a cost overrun, and we found ourselves that they had spent $500,000 more than what they expected. The Village of Marvin, if I'm not mistaken, is on the hook for 50% of that. So guess what? Costs are always rising. Costs continue to rise. So if we were to necessarily build, maybe that could help prevent down the road of us running into a cost, going into that and having to pony up to $250,000. And to go back on that, a lot of these monies, we get money from Powell funding, Powell Bill, which is a state-funded thing. And it's based on how many miles of roads we own. So we have, to be fair, an engineering firm that comes and rates our roads. So it's not like council's deciding which neighborhoods get finished. It's all based on ratings. But that was a suggestion made to me. And I started thinking, well, maybe that's something that we can bring to, you know, our work session of how, because we all want it done. We can eliminate the cost of the officers there. We all want to get it done. But if there's a way we could find funding within our own budget and get that accelerated. Because right now, they're telling us 2022, correct? In a year or two, another hurricane or two, then they move to 2026. We don't know. Costs are going up. And if we're on the hook for 50% of overruns, maybe it's time that we consider that. So that was a suggestion made by them. But there would be an IOU when DOT finally gets the funding of it. And I don't know if we want to talk more about the roundabouts and our thought when we talked about the district of, you know, we're looking at taking over that road as well. Roundabout to roundabout, we control the speed and what goes through there. So we're at the very beginning of that process along with the neighborhood roads, so.
I have another question.
You have a question in the audience, too? Since we took.
Okay. Get a microphone to you. One second.
On the roundabouts, I've been on almost every roundabout in Union County. Plus, I've traveled all over the country. So I've been in roundabouts. There's a lot of them in New England, Northern Virginia, other places. The only thing I've noticed on the roundabout is the, when you're coming from Providence Road down Newtown, when you get to the second roundabout, which is the closest one to the village, there are two lanes. One goes past Village and one goes around to go in the other direction. Is there any way that we can put up a sign that says yield to traffic already in the circle? Because the people coming from Providence Road going to continue on past Village are not yielding. I've seen so many almost side swipes there and horns glowing because the people coming that are going straight to Newtown are not yielding to people who are already in the circle who are trying to go past where Village Hall is.
So I'll answer that question if you will. When we implemented the roundabouts back two years ago, we had a lot of requests made as such. And we made several requests to DOT for more signage. And they have not allowed any signage to be put up. Their DOT roundabouts, DOT controls and maintains that entire road and roundabout. So any requests have to be made to them and they have to do a traffic study or, you know, they come out and do studies to see if it warrants additional signage. And they have yet to abate any requests that we have made.
Well, I mean, there is a yield sign there, but no one's paying attention to it. And the other day, I saw a Walmart tractor trailer which was coming past the Village. And he went all the way around the circle to go back past the Village again. And some pickup truck was coming. They almost side swiped each other because the pickup truck did not yield to the tractor trailer.
I know you can go on DOT's website. They have a video of how to use a roundabout. And it's one of those things. We could send that link or put it on our website to encourage that. But to her point is, we're not allowed to touch signage. We are limited to what we can do because that is a state-owned road. So, but I understand, I think slowly, it is the answer. Because what they had planned originally was a red light and moving that road over and making it one red light. And a side swipe or a fender bender is a lot less damaging than a T-bone on that. And I think that was one of the driving reasons they went to the roundabouts there. It's just going to take some time and education.
My second question is, since the widening of Providence Road has been moved to 2030, is there any way that Marvin and Waxah could coordinate and get together and put a stoplight at Providence and Bonds Grove Church Road?
Yeah, I think that's under the CRTPO, spot safety areas of identifying areas. I know years ago, council members from Waxah wanted us to participate in that with what's going on. And that's really at the far end of Marvin. But if there's something we can do in working with Waxah, but I believe it's on the safety or spot.
Rohit, isn't that on one of the surveys that we're looking at? At that intersection?
The red light. Waxah Marvin and Bonds Grove. Okay, that's, okay. So a little miscommunication there. The issue that we were addressing was the sightlines of Waxah Marvin and Bonds Grove, which is a little bit before. But I've heard that before. I know, I'm not sure that is under Marvin's jurisdiction. Though obviously, that road goes all the way to or comes through Marvin. It's something, yeah.
Yeah, I can speak to that, too. As she's saying, one quarter is in Marvin. One quarter is in Waxah. And then one half is in Union County. Right? So to build a traffic light there, you'd have to cost share with Waxah and Union County. Is there any interest in that?
We certainly could review it. I think that could follow, go under Powell Bill if there's funding there. But I don't know. I mean, that's certainly something we can bring up in a work session. And we'll make a note of that. It is a problem there because I travel that way, too, and making a left backs up things. But I think there's a plan for continuing of Bonds Grove beyond that, too. Yes, ma'am.
Talking about traffic, is there anything you can do as a village in the light between Crane Road and Newtown Road? I know that the traffic pattern, it takes a while because of the school and because people are going to work and cutting over to Providence Road. But my concern as a citizen is when I come on Crane Road at night and I have to sit by myself in the dark until that light turns, I am, I don't feel safe. So it's just a matter of tweaking it so that it goes a little bit faster at night. Is that at all possible?
Yeah, that, number one. Thank you for the question. That is not under our jurisdiction. If you look at the map that he has, it actually is under, I think, county.
Is that county?
County and a DOT road. However, if we walk back a little bit, I know it was just a suggestion by a resident to put a turning light there. And it was never there before. And just recently, we had a resident reach out to DOT and start the ball rolling. So I think we can help with that process as far as try and address it if you're sitting. I know there's, you know, if I'm driving late at night, there's a lot of areas that I'm sitting waiting for that. And I'm backing up the car to trip. Maybe the officers can speak to that and trip the system if there is a system in there, letting them know that there's a car if you do that.
I don't think that works.
I don't know. I didn't, you know, you sit there long enough, I guess.
No, I will confess, I've had to run the red light because I'm scared. And I'm not going to sit there by myself.
Your mom's got it.
No, that's okay. I will not. If I call DOT, my voice is this small. But I think if we have the support of the council, things might go better.
So before we leave, let's get your contact information with the clerk. And we will definitely get the specifics of the issue with you, if that's okay. And then we will do what we can with our voices. They're maybe a little bit bigger, but sometimes we feel they're not very big either with DOT. But we'd be happy to address that. Thank you.
So I have a question that was from the online chat earlier that didn't get addressed. To what degree does the PRG plans, to what degree have PRG plans been influenced by Waxah Marvin Road Corridor Study?
All right, that's a question for me. So I personally sat on the Waxah's Master Transportation Plan and made comments to make sure that our Greenway Plan was connected to their transportation plans. So the Waxah Marvin Road Corridor, they intend for that to be a continuous corridor between Waxah and through Marvin to Charlotte. And that is something that we coordinated on. And also the side of the road as well. We are thinking about that. It would be on the, how do I describe this? The south side of the road. But again, that's something that we coordinated. Also, the Providence Road is one big, very well-coordinated project. And we just heard it would be delayed till 2030. But that is also a major pedestrian trail corridor that Waxah is looking at to go from Waxah up to Charlotte of Providence Road. And that we would be a major part of it. We would be connected in that and in the section that we have, in the section that Marvin is on Providence Road.
And if I'm not mistaken, Rohit, maybe you can speak to this. Because Waxah wants a certain thing. If you're looking at three different towns, Weddington wants very little. We're probably pairing up well with Waxah as far as the width and size of the street because it is going to take a little more funding to do that. And some towns, they don't want to do that. So when you're trying to, you know, three towns connected off of Providence Road, it becomes tricky to make it all work and look right.
Right, so we looked at the trail size versus the cost and disturbance to the properties there. The wider the trail, of course, the more land you have to take from the residents who in Marvin are, they own the property up to Providence Road. They don't have any room between, there's no HOA property between their property and Providence Road. So Weddington is doing a five-foot wide trail. We are looking to do an eight-foot wide trail. And then in Waxah, it would be 12-foot. So it would be, that trail would be on the same side of the road. But, you know, we kind of chose a width that would be, you know, wide enough, but not, but a little less than 12 feet. So it's not infringing on the firm of the properties of the people that live right up against Providence Road.
Jamie, do you have some that were not previously answered before? Do you have any further questions?
Any other questions here for those residents that are here?
Can you scroll back there just to make sure? And if there's anyone in the audience virtually that's listening, if you have any further questions that haven't been addressed, you could please re-ask them if they happen to have been missed.
Otherwise, you got to wait till Coffee with Council. It's next Tuesday, so it's not too far away.
Can you, Tanner, can you pull up maybe the feed Can you, Tanner, can you pull up maybe the feed so we can look as well?
And he says, thank you all for this informative evening. Thank you all for addressing the time, taking the time to address our concerns. I'm sure we'll have many more questions, but the bottom line is to keep Marvin in a very special place.
I think we would agree with that.
There's one up there about Village Hall. I think there was one.
Who are the people in Firethorn that own shares in the venture property? That, I don't think that came up, but.
Can you repeat that?
The question was, who are the people in Firethorn that own shares in the venture property? Does anyone know anything about that, or that's not true?
I think we have the owner sitting in the audience. Is there anyone from Firethorn that own, have an invested interest in your, your land and property? We did just meet with Mr. Fincher yesterday in our special meeting. He owns the land that is in the roundabout that's closest to the village. He's on the south side of that, that right now it has corn there. It's about 13 acres, if I'm correct, right there on the corner.
Yes, sir. So far, DOT doesn't come in and take any more, whatever it was, last, last kill. I don't know of anyone that are related to in Firethorn. Most of my people don't have enough money to live on golf course. We're farm folks, from Matthews, and my mom's folks were from Marvin.
Thank you. And by the way, Mr. Fincher shared with us yesterday in the meeting that a lot of his family members are in that book, inherit the land. So he's been around for quite some time and has a great story and history with the village as well. So one of the ones that want to preserve and make something special or keeps Marvin special. Any other questions? Well, I guess we can wrap it up there. I'd like to say thank you again to staff for providing this ability to do this virtual with the situation with COVID that we have, and all those who attended virtually as well. And also for those of you who took the time to come out and reach out to us in person. Keep in mind, to Jamie's point, I said, we're trying to make this as transparent as possible, be available in all things, and we now have resources that you can look to. Just make sure that they're officially from the Village of Marvin. I encourage you to get your information from the Village of Marvin rather than other sources. I think you'll find yourself not being confused about what's going on in Marvin. But we're excited, I will tell you again, once again, this council. We can disagree on stuff, but we're respectful and we are operating in eight cylinders. We're moving forward on a lot of things, and we're excited about what we can do with what's left in the Village of Marvin to keep it a special place. So with that, I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Allison Taylor. Robert? Bob?
That's a placard.
Well, we do have a majority vote, I don't know.
Hey, give him the thumbs up.
Thumbs up, okay, we're good. All right, thank you all again for tonight and appreciate you coming out.